I would like to call the Fairfield County Council Regent Meeting to order. Wentzboro, South Carolina, Monday, October 25th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved in second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Let the record show there's six, zero. Also, Mr. Trapp says he's just gonna be a few minutes late. So, but he'll be on as quick as he can, had something to come up. Now we have invocation by Vice Chair Green.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come humbly before you, asking that you lead, guide, and direct our path as we make decisions to benefit the people of Fairfield County, in your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Can we get approval of the minutes?
It's been moved.
Second.
And second, for the approval of the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by I? Any opposed, nay? Let the record show seven, zero, for the approval of the minutes. Public presentation is non. First public comment section, Ms. Roberts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. We have four people who've signed up to speak. Khalid Lake, Chris Hill, Randy Bright, and Jeff Schaefer.
Um, excuse me, I thought I was on the roster or something. I didn't want to have to speak.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Chris Hill, Fairfield County coroner. I am here to basically talk about the, uh, the money that was set aside for the rescue plan. And from my understanding, there was some discussion about it that council wanted to give everybody a same amount across the board. On Friday, I put together a package for all the county council members that basically laid out what other counties did to take care of their folks and all. Myself along with the sheriffs, officer EMS, and fire. We didn't have a choice of the calls that we was able to take. We are still dealing with the COVID. You know, when we go to these calls, you know, we, we don't know who had it, who don't. Some of the stuff that we wear on a daily basis when we go to house calls. We got a respirator that we have to wear along with these Tyvek suits. As you see, going in the house, 90 degrees with these right here on, you come out the house soaking wet. We also equip EMS, which they had their own. And also when we work calls with the, with, um, with the sheriff's office, we make sure they are properly equipped also. We have face masks. So if councils, you know, gonna follow suit with the other counties, you know, did for their first responders, which that what we are considered first responders. Yeah, I understand y'all want to give everybody the same amount. You know, that was my understanding that were brought to me today. That's not fair. Now, everybody is working during the pandemic. You know, to me, it should be done on a, on a scale, starting with the higher-ups that are still working, which consists of myself, sheriff's office, EMS, and fire. You know, so then you break it down. We didn't have the opportunity to sit at home for a whole year. We didn't. You know, we get a death call, we have to respond. Fire department get a call, they got to respond. They got family member hollering in their face because they losing their house. Sheriff's office, they dealing with domestic. Ain't nobody gonna come up to you and say, I got COVID. So every day we placed in the line of fire this stuff, and we got families in stuff. So if the county council gonna do something, to me, it should be done fairly, not because I want to please everybody. Can't do it. You can't please everybody. Can't do it. I learned that when I came elected official. It'll be done as you do, done as you don't. So it should be fair all across the board. You know, like I said, start at the top with the people that are still working. You know, you got all these first responders out here, all of these people right here that got families and stuff. And we still dealing with it. So y'all be fair to us. You know, we not asking for a whole lot of whatever. Be fair to us. That's all we ask for. And not try to please everybody else that come in your ear and stuff.
Thank you. Normally now, we don't, we don't have applause for speakers, but we understand your concerns, but normally we don't do that, okay?
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I agree with Mr. Hill, and so does the American Recovery and Rescue Act. Let's take care of those people that were at risk, and at risk the most during the pandemic. And it's no more than these people right here. Nobody deserves it more than these people right here. And the pandemic act even mentions that, alludes to that in its, in its parameters. Why would you not want to take care of those that take care of us with a moment's notice? And then on the other hand, why would you, if you're even considering, why would you pay those who stayed home during the pandemic? Why would you pay those who weren't exposed like these people were? And none of us were. So they should receive the priority. And I don't, I can't imagine anybody not following along that line. And certainly, it's in the American Rescue Guidelines that you're supposed to follow. And included in that, can you guarantee, since you don't have any details at all in here what, what the plans are, can you guarantee that everything that you have planned fits the legal guidelines? And can your lawyer attest to that it fits the legal guidelines? Two things I'm asking. Think first of those who think for the citizens. That's our first responders. And then secondly, follow the guidelines and can you stand behind that you follow the guidelines of the American Rescue Plan? And if you take care of these people, that's a good step in following the guidelines.
Good evening. Jeff Schaefer, District Four. Hold your applause. You know, I, I've been missing a few of these meetings because I go home and I'm ill. I'm ill about the things that I hear you folks doing. But before I get on that subject, you've got the best people in the county sitting here tonight. Folks at home can't see this picture, but the audience is filled with first responders and the police department, EMS, the best people we have. And you're thinking about giving everybody the same amount of money. Forget these people. Everybody did nothing who stood home? These are the people who deserve the money. Absolutely deserve it. And, and when we talk about, and I've done this last year too, you want to incentivize people? Not everybody is equal. Not everybody. We're all not equal. Some of us work a little harder. Some of us are a little more dedicated. That doesn't come out in the proof of the pudding. You know, when you're finished doing your day's job, you go home. And some of us just forget it, tomorrow I'll come back in. Some of us don't even care. Those people don't deserve a dime, in my book. I own my own business. People who worked got rewarded. These people worked. They worked at the worst circumstances, risked their lives, came home, got their families subjected to a pandemic. You have to take care of these people. And before you get carried away, I don't know why you don't want to applaud them. They certainly deserve it. Thank you. Good night.
Mr. Boykin, can I do a point of order and make some comments?
It is the prerogative of the chair to say point of order. There could be an objection. The objection must be either sustained by folk voting in, in favor of it, or it can be overturned by folk voting no. But the chair has a prerogative of calling it, subject to an objection, subject to a vote.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, one of the things I do want to point out, on last year, Ms. Bertha Goines suggested that we give the essential workers to include fire, no, fire was left out, EMS, sheriff's department, and everyone a bonus pay. Okay, members from saving Fairfield got involved, and it didn't even get to the agenda. Okay, and, and the person, you know, I don't want to call the name in there, but I want to verify with Mr. Robertson, that's what happened. The very people that's talking about you should get paid today is the very ones that denied you pay from the CARES Act. That's what you need to know. Thank you. Any other comments? Any more speakers?
No, sir.
We're down to public hearing. Did we sign, anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Three persons signed up. Jennifer Fitch is the first person.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Fitch. I'm one of the captains with Fairfield EMS. I've worked with EMS almost 22 years. And when you work within an entity, you know how your entity compares to others that are like you. And I have to say that Fairfield has the best equipment, the best employees, and the best management. And as, you know, like, if you work computer software, you know how your entity compares to others like you. I've worked EMS a long time, so I know how our EMS group compares to others. And I, if I, I know I just have a little bit of time, so I'd like to go back to March of 2020, when all of this pandemic really kicked off and no one really knew what to expect, no one knew what to think, no one knew how to protect themselves, whether you're a civilian or in public safety. The CDC was changing guidelines, seemed like by the hour. We didn't know if we were wearing enough PPE or too much PPE or, you know, we didn't know because it was just best practices and guidelines. There was no, hey, y'all do this and you'll be pretty safe. It was, oh, we'll try this. And then tomorrow it was a different rule. And it's not like you get a blast email that says, CDC says do this. You had to research it and keep up with speed on your own, pretty much. So we were trying to keep our employees safe, literally minute by minute changes. And while everyone was rapidly being told to go home and pretty much shelter in place and only go out for essentials, we didn't get that option. And I have to say that no one quit during that time, even though we didn't even know if we were gonna go home, because nobody knew how dangerous this was. We didn't know if we were gonna take the virus home to our family. We had an employee living out of their car for months because they did not want to go home and expose their family to the virus. But you know what? He came back to work every day. For the longest time, we would just sit in our day room and just kind of stare at each other because we didn't know if that was gonna be our last call, if that's gonna be the last time we clocked in, or the last time we clocked out, because it was just, everybody was scared. And so I do think there is a difference, and I think that if other counties are giving their EMS workers, and I know our neighboring county, which we compare ourselves pretty heavily because they are the capital city EMS, which is Richland County, and they gave all their employees, full-time EMS employees, $5,000 apiece. And I don't think that we are any less than that. And we have to, we had to learn best practices for ourselves. We kept ourselves safe. We had care for each other, and nobody quit during that time. Some people have gone different directions just because life has taken them that way, but it was not the pandemic that ran them off. And I think that says a lot for the people of this county, and I appreciate y'all's
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. First of all, I want to thank the chair for pointing out, apparently there's some saving Fairfield members on council who have votes and decided some votes last year. So thank you for illuminating us on that, for, I wonder which ones of you are saving Fairfield that voted against. But thank you, I appreciate you, you pointing that out. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to also illuminate you, it's two saving Fairfield members that are up here today pleading for our first responders to be treated fairly. That's now, instead of pushing it onto someone else, it's pushed onto the leadership of this council to treat our first responders fairly. And why you didn't think of them first? No idea. Now, moving on to the next subject at hand, on the compact receivers. The issue here is, is also often in our ordinances, not a lot of detail, no research indicated, no comparisons made, just here's an ordinance. Maybe we'll find out later. Normally we don't, but I'm asking you this time, at least by the second reading, let's get some details. Let's hear why we need these. Let's hear what comparisons we've made to other counties, to other opportunities, and is it a prudent decision? Or is it just something that, let's just do the easiest way, go from point A to point B, do not stop at goal, don't do any research, don't do any homework, don't do any comparisons, like so many of the ordinances we have had, including our budget? that you yourselves are now scrambling to correct in many instances. So again, like we say so many times up at this podium, do your homework. Let us know what you're doing. And make the most prudent decision based on fact. Thank you. Jeff Schaefer.
On the ordinances, it seems to me things need a little explanation. I know that once you step into the political arena, that your skin gets thick. You can avoid having to answer pertinent questions. So let me say right up front, I'm personally offended. And so is every other citizen with half a brain. If I have offended anyone in my comments tonight, please be patient. I'll get to everyone. Apparently, there was no ordinance to approve a charity fund for the council members. They may be starving. I might have missed that night, final reading. I'm here tonight. I'm not here for every meeting because I go home ill. I mentioned that before. I really do. It's sickening sometimes. How you can say you're doing the best for this community when you're taking reimbursement expenses and no other council members in this state take them? Not all of them. You all have your own personal cell phones, all seven of you, and you've had them for years. And of course, on that phone, you get free internet service, absolutely included, free cellphone service. Now, you may be thinking we're all lightweights and ever look and see what you're doing. That's not so. I looked and I have foiled all the records and all the expenses requests. And in total, all the money you.
Mr. Schaefer, does this relate to the ordinance?
Yeah, listen, don't interrupt me because I'm going to.
Hey, listen.
Are you stopping the clock? Are you stopping the clock? Thank you. Stop the clock and I'll be happy to.
Please address the ordinance.
Yeah.
If you don't address the ordinance, do not talk.
Are you shutting me up? You don't want to hear what I got to say?
If you addressing the audience.
Well, I'm addressing how you ordinance things and what you do. And meanwhile, it's still free speech. And if you don't like what I say, you can interrupt me. But no one gets to interrupt you when you make comments that State of Fairfield had said something and you know damn well they never said it. Should I continue? You want to throw me out? You've got enough police.
That's right. That's right. If you can't, if you can't address the ordinance, that's right. Please.
Well, I'm addressing the ordinances. Shall I continue?
If you want to address the ordinance, but if you're not, do not speak.
Do not speak. Good luck. So as I said, I foiled records for expenses. And District One and District Two, that's you, took more than 40% more than anybody else. Why is that? Why did you do that? How do you, how do you rate that you get? Well, they're right here. Don't worry.
That's right. He is not addressing the ordinance.
Well, the ordinances have told you, you don't have an ordinance for that. You don't have an ordinance for you to take expenses.
I went down to public hearing.
Do you have an ordinance to take expenses? I don't want to argue with you. Let me finish talking and I'll walk away when the clock's done. Yeah, okay. Well, you folks at home, watch State of Fairfield. We'll post all this evidence and you'll see what I'm talking about. You can have a seat. I'm going to leave. Don't worry. You have too many police here for me to give you a hard time. Good night, folks.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Okay, we're down to item eight, ordinance, resolution, and orders. No, B.
B.
Yeah, B.
One person signed up to speak, Mr. Randy Bright. Again, as with all ordinances, we're going to go into any detail. Jeff said it. I said it. We've got to do our homework. We've got to do our research. We've got to do our comparisons. Got to come to the plate, to the people with honesty and transparency. And those are all things that no matter what ordinance we're talking about, are applicable. And unfortunately, those are all imperatives that we have not seen to do our due diligence. I don't know if it's ability. I don't know if it's a natural secretness. Don't know if it's a lack of confidence. I don't know if it's inability to put the effort forward. Or what is it? Let's do a presentation with all ordinances that have the facts so that people can make judgments, so that facts that your constituents can give you input. We've got, well, I guess slightly under 20,000 residents now in this county. And that's 40,000 eyes that could help input. But if we don't have the use of those eyes, if we don't have the use of those mouths, and if we try to silence those mouths, then everyone in the county loses. And that's where your due diligence comes in. Make us all winners. We want you as citizens to be successful because when you're successful, we all benefit. But when you don't do your homework, when you don't eliminate roadblocks to transparency and when you don't make comparisons and when you don't go needs over wants, then 20,000 citizens lose and you lose. Thank you. No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
So we're down to item eight, ordinance, resolution, and orders. Item A, third and final reading, orders number 779. Orders to make supplemental appropriation from the fund balance to purchase compact receivers for the MAC and Ridgeway Recycling sites.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Mr. Carter, you want to talk about that some?
I can, yes, sir. As many of you have seen at the MAC and Ridgeway sites, where you throw the trash kind of over the wall, concrete wall there, the boxes that the trash goes into and is compacted into. All three of these boxes that we're replacing are original boxes that were purchased with each site. And so they're just worn out. We did get contractors to come in and take a look at repairing them as they are. But it was about $8,500 per box to do the welding and repairs on them. And so we just elected to go ahead and ask for three new ones to replace those with.
Any other discussion from any council member? All in favor, let it be known by I.
Aye.
Producers, nay? Does the record show? Seven, zero. Item B, second reading, orders number 778. Orders to appropriate funds received by Fairfield County from the American Rescue Plan.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Since this B don't describe in detail the exact funding, Mr. Carter, can you give us the total amount of money that was received for the ERP funds?
I believe you get it in two separate allotments. And I think that this allotment is 2.7 million from. Okay, right at two, yeah, a little less than 2.2. I was looking at the 2.7 and expected loss of revenue that it says in the ordinance. So.
2.2 million.
Point two.
Close to it.
Close to it.
Can you break down how many full-time and so forth employees we're talking about?
Included in that amount is 284 full-time, four part-time, and 396 temporary employees.
All right. And when you talk about temporary employees, can you kind of break down who falls in the category as temporary employees?
Yep. The majority of them come from solid waste. The voter registration office, poll workers, and the volunteer fire department. We have 48 from solid waste, 124 from public works, and 156 from volunteer fire. EMS is the next largest at 18.
So how many, you say poll workers? That's about 124. How many elections we had during COVID?
I believe just one. Did the town have an election too that we had to pay that for or not?
So they came out one day?
One day.
And we're going to pay them for hazard pay?
That's included.
Are council members, what other council members described as? Full-time, part-time?
Full-time.
Are council members included in this $1,200?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So council members come up here twice a month for maybe an hour at a time. We had an emergency order in place where citizens weren't allowed in the building, but council members going to receive $1,200.
They're included.
Who, who was responsible for drafting this ordinance and putting all this stuff together?
Administration's role in this was we were asked to provide numbers.
Provide numbers. Well, from, from day one, this administration has lacked a lot of things, but definitely lacks vision and priorities. During the budget, when we started discussing this rescue money, Mr. Carter and Ms. Bass, on numerous occasions, urged administration to have workshops so all of council could be involved in distributing this money. Well, Mr. Bell has not called myself, Mr. Gilbert, or Mr. Robinson. This shows Mr. Bell does whatever he wants and when he wants and does not want to listen to anyone. This ordinance does not address what's really important here. During this pandemic, not one Fairfield County employee was terminated. All Fairfield County employees received pay and a lot were able to work from home. All county employees are important, but the essential workers who had to be out during the pandemic should be compensated more. Giving every employee $1,200 simply is not fair. I'm okay with giving every employee something, but the essential should receive a lot more. I guess $500,000 on recreation is more important than those who are busting their tails for this county every single day. These men and women deserve more and we owe y'all more. I make an amended motion that we reconsider the ARP funds and we give the essential workers that were out here fighting to fight during COVID more money.
I second that.
It's been moved in second that we give the, the, um, the essential workers more money. So it's been moved in second discussion. I have discussion. Let me tell you. One of the things people are doing up here is sort of showboating. And the reason I say that is this, it's really simple. We had an opportunity from the CARES Act to provide money to all the essential workers. You did not hear anything come from council. We wrote letters trying to make sure we included fire. Okay, um, we could have given them anything. We could have given everyone because all they had to do is go ahead and give them money and then get reimbursed. We chose not to do it. Okay? And as a matter of fact, do, do any of you ever remember it coming on the agenda? You don't, do you? But let me tell you why. Because there are people who got involved and said not to give you all anything. Nothing. Okay? One of the things we did is this. We wanted to make sure our county employees receive something. We got an, here was a opportunity for us to be able to give the county employees a bonus type pay through the Rescue Plan ARP monies. So what we did is we looked at it and we looked at it very closely. We've been, we've been talking about how we could do this for quite some time. So if you look at it, it's, um, county employees this year because of the budget constraints, because there was no money in fund balance to do anything with. None. So we had to cut the budget. And when we cut the budget, what ended up happening is we could not afford to give the county employees a raise. So what we did, here was an opportunity to be able to do that. So we gave, we took an average of 40,000 per employee. And we said 3%. So three times the 40,000 is $1,200. Not only that, so when we looked at that, fire was not included. Okay, and their answer calls too. So what we did is, is give them some money also. Okay, yes. And that's how we have derived at it. But let me tell you, it was derived at it in a way that, um, that addressed the needs of all the county employees. Okay? Now, the opportunity for give to essential employees was during the CARES Act.
Let me, let me straighten that up. The reason the CARES Act was voted down because at that time, Mr. Bell wanted to do the same thing he's doing now and give money to every single employee and we voted it down because he didn't want to give.
You didn't vote anything down.
Didn't want to give just to essential workers.
You, you didn't vote anything down.
It didn't go no further.
Didn't, because it didn't come to.
There's an amended motion on the floor. Let's do a vote and see who cares about these workers today and see if we want to give them more money.
Hey, you all can clap and we told you we don't normally do that. But pull the minutes and see when it came to on the agenda.
Ask Mr. Bell if he's going to give up his $1,200 and distribute it among all of y'all. I give mine up. Don't, don't give me any money. I don't want it. Give it to the employees.
I like to say also, this is what you get when you don't invite, when you don't include the full board in making major decisions. You get these employees, you know, really it's a slap in the face for all of these employees that are sitting out here now that you're, that they're wanting to give you the same thing as, as everybody else is getting. You know what? Back a couple of weeks ago, when we was in our other meeting, Mr. Bell kept ratting and raving about in, in 2017, we had $21 million. Now we got $10 million. Did he, did he forget that at the beginning of our budget session this year, we had $19 million in our budget? What happened with that? So the right, the right thing to do is to treat these people the way to do. I mean, they said, they put their lives on. Some of these people out here even got COVID for working for us. And I was, you know, my hat's off to you guys. I really do appreciate you. And I don't think it's fair. I really don't think it's fair, the way y'all being treated. You know, and we can spend money on many parks and things like that. And we got so many other essential needs that we've got in this county. It's got to stop. You know what I'm saying? We need to do better as far as spending money, but yet still, we do it loosely. It's got to stop with the full board. We represent, every one of us represent a district. And it's not fair that the three of us is never included in decision-making. When we find out about certain things, a lot of times, it's right here in this meeting.
Again.
All I got to say.
Okay.
But it's easy to blame somebody else. Every time you point your finger, you got three pointing back at you.
But the biggest slap in the face is, like Mr. Paul has said about. Uh, but the, the biggest slap in the face is, uh, like Mr. Paul has said about the CARES Act money that, uh, we could've gave to the essential workers. And Mr. Paul and Mr. Gilbert normally used to vote with the five-two majority. Wouldn't even allow to come to the agenda. So that is a slap in the face to the ones of y'all who's, who's clapping along with them now. They didn't want y'all to have anything then.
We do what now?
When you, you was voting five-two in, with the majority and you didn't even allow the CARES Act to come to the agenda, to give them money. Last year? You forgot that?
It was last year.
So that, that is a slap in the face. So they can snow you all they want.
They want to talk about two years ago, but ask them what they're gonna do now.
To fund y'all with money.
Ask them what they're gonna do now.
They had an opportunity.
You had an opportunity.
If you have, when he's gonna care about you, he's gonna say the first of never.
Eh, eh.
Now this is the same one that last year, they didn't want to give y'all anything, not even a raise.
But then the motion, then the motion's on the floor.
Let, let me tell you again. Go back and look at the minutes. Go back and look at all the agendas and tell me, did it ever come on the agenda?
It wasn't allowed.
Do y'all care about two years ago than y'all care about now? Okay, thank you.
Okay, you can say that.
Mr. Chair, what, what is the amount? The, the supposed amount we, you, you're gonna give to the essential workers? Total, do we have that?
I, 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 coming now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we have twelve hundred dollars.
What, what is the total proposed?
Four hundred and sixty thousand.
And we getting two point two million?
Two point one three seven million. Okay, um, any other discussion? Um, the, so the minute motion's on the floor. All in favor of the minute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay.
Can we do a, can we do a hand, can we do a handshake?
Okay.
I got one other thing.
Okay, um, hold a minute. We, we voted. Okay, um, hand show, all, all, all who, um, all who voted for the minute motion, show your hands. All who voted nay. Let the record show four-three.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Everybody stand up for a minute. Y'all just got slapped in the face by this administration.
Y'all, thank y'all for slapping us in the face.
Okay, the, the, um, the minute motion did not pass. All, um, so the original motion is on the floor. It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Mr. Bell, I, 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 I would like to, I just think we may need to reconsider or look at it again before we vote. That's, that's just my opinion.
Okay, um, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay.
Aye.
Let the record show four-three. Item nine, board and commission minutes. Ten, board and commission, um, disability, special needs, August twenty, twenty-one, and September seventeen, twenty. Item ten, board and commission appointments, none. Eleven, old business, none. New business, none. Be down now, item thirteen, county administrator report.
Good evening. I just want to take a few minutes tonight and recognize the Fairfield County Veterans Affairs Office. Um, we have had some turnover in that department and it has kind of, um, been a little unstable over the past period of time. But, um, I just kind of wanted to let you guys know, um, what, what that department has been achieving lately. Um, we have Ms. Alberta Woodard as our new, um, Director of Veterans Affairs. She began working in the office on July twelfth. Um, on July twenty-third, Ms. Woodard became an accredited representative for the South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs. On August third, Ms. Woodard became an accredited representative of the American Legion. And on August twenty-sixth, she received her personal identity verification card under Homeland Security and that's required for them to be able to fully do their job and serve the veterans. Um, in the fall of twenty twenty-one, uh, Ms. Woodard, um, and Ms. Peggy Frick, uh, who is the Assistant, uh, Veteran Service Officer, became members of the South Carolina Association of Veterans Affairs Officers. Um, and the purpose of this association is to assist Veterans Affairs Officers in the state and becoming more effective in performing their duties by studying, discussing, and recommending improvement in Veterans Affairs. And they investigate and provide a means of the exchange of ideas and experience between county Veterans Affairs Officers. Um, this association is dedicated to educating, um, empowering, and representing the South Carolina veteran advocates. Uh, it is a service to all forty-six counties. And because of her accomplishments, uh, Ms. Peggy Frick was named the Member of the Year. She received an award that states, "Your commitment to mission accomplishment is absolutely remarkable. Even in the abs, absences of a CVAO, which is a director, your dedication to your veterans has been amazing. We thank Peggy Frick for her hard work and commitment to the office and care of our veterans. She's been working in the office since two thousand and seventeen and continues to do an exceptional job. And we are very proud of her accomplishments and also Ms. Woodard's." Um, I want to add too that their client interactions have actually doubled since July and they were able to have fifteen new clients come in during the month of September. Um, they also recently received a letter of appreciation from Senator Tim Scott's office. So I just, I, I want to just thank.
Read that, you got that letter, you want to read that letter?
Yeah, I can. Um, says, "My staff has informed me of the outstanding work you do to assist our South Carolina veterans and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your public service. You serve as an invaluable resource in support of our joint constituencies and we are most appreciative of your dedication and professionalism. Your efforts serve as an example for all those who, who meet you each day. Please remember that our office is always available if we can be any, of any assistance." So, um, Ms. Woodard is here tonight. Um, appreciate you coming, Ms. Woodard, and appreciate what you do. And Ms. Peggy also, uh, would you like to add anything on to any of that?
First of all, I just want to say that, um, it has been a pleasure and it is, not has, but it is a pleasure, um, doing this job. I love what I do as a veteran myself. So I know the trials and, and the struggles that, that there are trying to get benefits, trying to make sure that all our veterans are taken care of, not just in this county though, but we have a lot of veterans come from all over. And I applaud, um, everything that we do. Ms. Peggy, she is phenomenal. Um, she taught me a lot, but, um, I also, not but, but I also want to make sure that we continue to do a great job, as I told in, in the meeting, not going anywhere. So, there's not going to be a turnover in that department, Brad, thank you.
We appreciate you.
I, I appreciate you guys for this, just. I ain't going anywhere. Thank you. Um, but I, I basically love what I do and I'm going to continue to do what I can for the veterans. And I, I thank Anna McDaniel and, and Senator Mike Fanning for choosing me. But this, this job also is, is pretty much like, uh, uh, a God-given talent. It is my ministry to make sure that everyone is taken care of. If you're a veteran, surviving spouses, we're gonna take care of you and do our best and, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, but, um, come up here and, um, and I see part of the delegation here is Ms. McDaniel and, and, um, can we have, um, someone to take a picture?
Love you.
Okay. Let's call.
That's all I have.
Okay, we're down to item fourteen. Um, clerk to council report, none. Okay, council, county council time. Anyone from county council to speak?
I think enough been said tonight.
Okay, um, we're down to, um, um, executive session. Um, can, can we, can we get a motion to go into executive session?
Still moving, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's, it's been moved in second that we go into executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Um, item A, personnel matter regarding county administrative candidate interviews. Um, item B, receipt of legal advice, um, discussion regarding matters relating to housing development opportunities. Um,
Would you also include a update on the Fairfield Water Sewer Authority? Um, just a brief update for council information.
Okay, um, and then let's add item C, um, a, a receipt of legal advice concerning the Fairfield County Joint Water Sewer Authority. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? So, um, let the record show seven-zero and we're now going into executive session at six-fifty.
You call it? About to, not today.
You gotta get on it, Ms. Roberts.
I'll go, I'll go, I'll go.
Can we get a motion come out of the executive session?
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we come out of this executive session. No action taken in executive session. Any, any, any questions, discussion?
Mr. Bill, I just wanna, I wanna put something on the record. Tonight during my comments when I referred to administration, I wanted to reflect that in no way was I talking about Mr. Calder or Ms. Bass. That those two were not involved.
Any other discussion? All in favor coming out of executive session? Aye.
Aye.
Hold his name. Okay, we're now out of executive session. And do we have anything else?
Make motion to adjourn.
It's been moved, it's been moved second that we adjourn.
I see that.
Okay, it's been moved and second that we adjourn. All in favor that it be known by aye?
Aye.
Hold his name.
Go.
Seven zero, say we adjourn. We now adjourn.
Yes.